I'm sure we're live.
Welcome back to our morning meeting of July twenty-third. We are now at our ten o'clock action item. And it's signing a contract with BSU for the all hazards mitigation plan update. Emergency manager, Chief Bonilla.
So we got, we worked out everything on both sides to the prosecutor's office and BSU to get all of the language correct in the contract. So we're ready to go for approval. I did try to get some other individuals, other individual writers to do, but they're, they already had two or three counties each. So they were, they didn't feel they could meet the standard. So I was hoping to get at least one more or two. But they just weren't able, they just called back and said that they couldn't, because they already had two or three counties in place. That they're currently working on. So, or had just been awarded.
And I do feel that BSU is so engaged in the community right now that they actually have a lot of information. So it probably is gonna save us some money with them already being up to date on what's happening.
So a lot of the things that they've done thus far, BSU over the last eighteen months, they really geared it towards what information that would need to go into or make it easier for information gathering in the update to the all hazard mitigation plan.
So far, all the work I've done with them has been top notch. So very impressed with their team.
They're pretty excited about it.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, sign the contract with Boise State University for the all hazards mitigation plan update project.
Okay. And moved in second row in favor?
Aye.
Clerk Miller, do you have a copy of this?
But I'm asking clerk's office to print it off and bring it up. So.
And then you'll take care of getting BSU to sign it?
Yep, I'll get ahold of Nick at BSU to get that going. Alright.
Alright, he will get it printed and bring it up.
Thank you so much.
Is that something you want us just to shoot over to you on through email?
Does that work for you, sir?
Absolutely.
Thanks so much. Alright, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
If you wanna wait?
I can wait two minutes.
Okay, unless you're in a.
I'm not in a hurry. I thought I would have to speak more, so I'm good.
Can I add just a little bit? Commissioners, my apologies. I do wanna make it clear that unfortunately typically we would use Title III funding for that. But with the uncertainty of Title III, we're gonna have to utilize PILT. So just to make sure, that's where I would recommend that the commissioners take out this expense. We do know that this is important for our community. So I do think the commissioner should fund it. Unfortunately, it's not been budgeted for in a regular budget. It would have been budgeted for in Title III. However, we all know the uncertainty of Title III. So.
I think PILT is used for these one-off type expenses. So, yep, I think it is.
Just to make sure that.
Sixty, sixty-two thousand, sixty-five thousand? Do I need to make a amendment to my motion?
You got that. Commissioner Thompson, I don't believe that you do. I mean, I think what you guys are approving right now is just the, the actual contract. I just wanted to let you know that I did share with the prosecuting attorney's office when they were preparing the cover sheet that funding had not been identified, but funding would be identified in the future.
Thank you.
I think that's the appropriate place to take it from. Up next is budget workshop. So, Clerk Miller, lead us through where you want to start.
So the first thing that I wanted to share with you is that we have received the L two worksheet from the state tax commission. The new worksheets are ready to be submitted to the taxing districts as well as for Valley County, which shows the maximum allow that Valley County can levy for. And what we were waiting on is the, basically the final values from the assessors as we all, as we all know, BOE is been finalized and.
Wanna put your microphone up so the public can?
And the values have been set, or at least the preliminary values have been set. We also have the new construction from the assessor's office and what I will pull up is that information for the commissioners to review. New construction or the final value is twelve million, seven hundred and thirty, twelve billion, seven hundred and thirty-five million, eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars or the value. The new construction value was two hundred and fifty-nine million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. And if I can pause here, that agreement from Boise State is here.
That was a huge amount. So now is that assessed property value?
Look at this.
That's crazy. When I first saw us jump that high, I think we started, I was like two billion. So it's gone up that much, three billion. Yeah, crazy.
So what that allows the county to do is levy the three percent, which is three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. New construction, which is two hundred and nine, uh, nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. So the full amount that Valley County, the additional, the additional amount that Valley County can levy for in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, tax year twenty-twenty-five, is five hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total amount that Valley County can levy for, for all of the funds is ten million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Any questions regarding the L two worksheet? Okay, so based off what Valley County has preliminary budgeted for, this is a spreadsheet to show you that with all of the proposed budgets, right now Valley County would levy the three percent plus new construction. We've broken it down to all the funds. We've projected our cash forward for the majority of the funds. There are funds that are up here that we are still working through. Those are just the, the, the regular funds that we have revenue coming in that it, there are no tax dollars that are levied. Like our Title III, our sheriff capital, the interlock fund, we're still working on those. But there are no tax dollars that will be levied to fund those funds. So what you're seeing right now.
Thank you.
Sorry. Let's just go with the general fund that the, it says approved, but that's not approved yet. The proposed budget for the general fund budget is nineteen million, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Valley County would need to use three point six million in cash forward. The other revenue, the projected revenue that we were to collect, that is not tax dollars. That is from the state, the, from our alternative revenue sources that Valley County has. Permit fees, building department fees, things of that nature, recording fees. That's what is accounted for in the other revenue. So the amount to be levied for the general fund would be seven million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. That's approximately five hundred thousand dollars more than what was levied for last year. What I kinda wanted to, to review now is a few things I wanted to share with you. The projected revenue is down one point five-three percent from last year. What we had projected in revenue for this fiscal year was seven million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and six, sixty-eight cents in other revenue. What we're projecting for next fiscal year is seven million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight dollars, which is a decrease of approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Where's that largest decrease coming from?
Uh, grants, uh, as well as, um, really it's grants. Uh, what I would like to next show you is, right now, we're just gonna focus on the general fund, but we will go to the other funds. Bear with me, my apologies. Apologies for the awkward silence. I was trying to find the right report that I wanted to show, share.
Your desktop looks like the fifteen things opens. Always.
So I, I wanted to go over each one of these individually with you, but first what I wanted to do is show you the general fund overall is looking at increasing by three point three-two percent. That's an increase of six hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. So grand total, it's a three point three-two percent increase. We can go over each department's increase. So you can see if you would like. I did send out all of the budget worksheets for the general fund. And I just kinda wanted to show you each one. So you can get a, a general understanding of where the increases are. For all of our retirement, medical insurance, workers' comp, social security, there is an increase of approximately six point one-six percent. Our retirement is increasing by four percent. Social security is increasing by seven point seven-three percent. Our medical insurance is increasing by six point four-five percent. Unemployment is significantly increasing by thirty-three percent. And then our workers' comp is increasing by four percent. This information is provided to us by Percy from the state and from the federal government.
We know why the unemployment's jumped thirty-three percent?
We potentially. Okay. So commissioners, just to, for full transparency, this is the county's portion of all of these payments that erode, right? So it's approximately over three point two million dollars for, for basically for benefits. Any questions regarding this? Uh, this worksheet?
So when we think about new positions, look at that six point one-six percent, we have to add back to every new position.
Yes, and that's where you hear me, yes.
Keep an eye on, what's, what's the overage costiness for all those positions?
Okay. Um, again, if the commissioners are inclined, we can just kinda take a look at. This is, this is the opportunity just to kinda get a full overview and I, I want to show you what I have readily available for you guys to see with the opportunity for you to ask questions. What you're seeing now is for the clerk's office, there is an increase of approximately ten percent to this budget. The majority of that is for the public relations position. As there was a request from McKenzie to increase her hourly rate. She has not had an adjustment in that for several years. So we did account for that in the budget. And that is the, the increase, the significant increase there. We also have an individual within our office who is going to be obtaining a certificate through the elections. The election center, she will, she should be completing her certification by the end of the fiscal year to be come in a certified election coordinator, working with human resources. He made that adjustment and provided with, provided us with that amount. So that's what you also see that higher increase for the salaries deputies is the potential of, it's gonna happen. She has one more course. And then she'll be a certified elections coordinator.
So it's not a new position, she should get certified.
Correct. Any questions for the clerk's budget?
You did what I asked, I think. It doesn't seem fair that the clerk's budget has to encompass public relations. Cause it shows a big increase on your budget, but it's.
True fact. Uh, we just didn't know. I mean, we could fund that. We could move it.
So when we created this position, it was, do we create a whole separate division again? Same thing with the grant writer.
Yeah, the grant writer is also in.
Yeah, do we make them underneath an elected official? And it just made sense. The clerk was willing at that time to do that instead of hiring like division leads that these were positions that we could place underneath an elected official from now until such time as we felt like, you know, they needed to be in their own separate division. But I don't think we're there. I think it's worked out well so far.
The only one I would question, Commissioner Caldwell is the public relations one. Should we move that to the, underneath the commissioners?
That's what I was.
That, that's. Maybe.
Yeah, they report to us anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, uh, it's still within the general fund. It's just a matter of moving it. And I guess it does show, oh, the clerk is increasing their budget by ten percent, which is not maybe fully accurate. But that's really for the commissioners to decide. The previous funding for the public relations was just budgeted for in the clerk's office.
I asked for an increase for you this year too. That got put into there.
Commissioners, I, we did notice that as my conversations with the HR director is also, there's probably should be some policy put in place by the county to consider if an elected official resigns during term, where does that salary begin? Increases for elected officials, should it be based on years of service as an elected official? So I do think that there's something that was brought to the attention that probably should be flushed out in years to come. Really how to budget for elected officials that have tenure.
I agree a hundred percent. I think we need to work on that this year and make sure that we solidify that. And honestly, I mean, this won't impact me, but I think in next year's budget, you guys need to consider doing something extra if you're chairman for this group, that the chairman gets some kind of a little tiny bump because he should be spending additional time doing the work. So that wouldn't impact me, but I'm gonna do that after I leave term. Just so, I'm not saying that and trying to get anything from it. But I do think that we should do that.
Would you like that for fiscal year twenty-six? I can start putting something together for that and have something at least to present to you.
I just, I think as far as the policy, because this, this is where the rub and the reason that I ask this to be looked at. So when we hire someone brand new into their position and it became a point, I'm not saying anybody about anything, people that are currently in the county, but we appointed some people that had zero experience that came in at exactly the same level as our clerk who has, how many years do you have in the county?
Twelve. Well, twenty-five years with the county, twelve is.
But twelve is the clerk. And so he's training all these other elected officials coming in. And I don't think that is fair at all without just compensation to do that. And so it's something that I think it's very fair that there be something based on years of service. That when we elect somebody new, there isn't just an expectation that everybody's gonna make the exact same. And you're brand new to the position.
I agree entirely. I'd be happy to put something together.
And even for county commissioner, I mean, you just come in with less knowledge than if somebody's been here. I mean, Elton's been here for twelve years. Was it fair that I made the same amount when I started six years ago with somebody that already had six years under their belt? I think this conversation should be. I don't know what you guys think. Well, not for today then. We'll have that conversation later. Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, this is for the, um, the assessor's office. Not reviled, but the assessor's office. There was a, a increase requested for, a significant in, uh, increase requested for travel registration fees. If you remember, uh, this is so the assessor has the ability to take her chief deputy to some of the conferences. So that was the request. I don't know if you have any other questions regarding, okay? I know this is slow, meticulous, but just wanted to do this.
We'd be doing all this on our own if we didn't have you. So thank you so much for doing this on our behalf.
This is, yeah, again, a lot of work for all of us, including all departments, all elected officials. And yes, a heavy lift from the clerk's office, including my chief deputy. So. We're not done, but we're there. We're getting close. So this is for the treasurer's office?
Over on the right, that was one of the things. So it shows two point eight, eight, six percent total expense, and yet it's three and three point five-six.
So that is for the, the, uh, potential increase from fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, that makes sense.
So yeah, these, these expense lines are, uh, the percentage is increasing, but overall the increase is two point eight-six. Okay? Commissioners, the next one is for the sheriff's office. We have budgeted for the requested two patrol positions. That does increase their budget, um, that expense line by thirteen point nine-one percent. But again, that is for the two new requested positions.
And that's, I have, I have questions about that. The sheriff told us this is his five-year plan.
Yes.
That we don't have to fund all of these this year.
Yes.
He does have another patrol deputy now that he has to fill. So I don't know how many positions he has to fill right now. But I would give him one, but I don't know that we need to do two this year. What are your guys' thoughts on that?
Uh, on the patrol, just the patrol, not the, yeah, the communications. I agree on the communications with him. Cause I do think it is difficult to try and staff that with the amount of people they have.
When they ask him for, um, for the next few years, a total of six to increase, but.
Now, if you, if you remember going back, some of that is communications. Some of it is upgrading existing positions. But he was asking for two new patrol, one in the back country, one in the street.
We have two in the back country right now.
Correct. But if we give him, I mean, he can make the decision on whether he wants it in the back country or whether he wants it on the street and how they wanna fill those. But he came to us and said, these are a five-year plan, that these are things that they want to do. And we're giving them an awful lot of that five-year plan. I don't think that we need to fill positions where he currently has positions. We've struggled to keep those positions full. And so that's, that's my recommendation. We give one, we don't give both.
I'm, I'm in agreement on the communications side. I think there's a lot of turnover on the patrol side. And I'd like to see it consistently full for a while before we add any other positions. As well as, I don't think it's been bud, budgeted to outfit a new car, to get a new vehicle. I think there's a lot of budgetary items missing.
The vehicles were not included in this, uh, proposed budget at this point in time. The equipment was, uh, but the vehicles were not.
Yeah, I think same thing. I mean, add one deputy is fine for right now. I mean, you know, like Mike knows, we've had so much turnover in the sheriff's office. It's like a revolving door. It's, I don't know how you guys keep up with that. It's, it's tough.
So what the clerk's office will do, will make a change based on the conversation today and reducing this by one position?
I want to make sure that we're clear, cause what I'm hearing from Commissioner Caldwell is no additional co-opsers. What I was saying was one. So I'm hearing you agree with me with.
I don't, I think one would be fine, you know, two, until things settle down. And I don't know if it ever will. It is just our area, you know, and it can come and go so much. Worst part is finding a place for people to live.
But I think before we fill the other one, we do need to see some stability and these positions filled and not have outstanding positions.
Will we address the vehicle? There's a lot of costs there that weren't considered.
The way I look at it, he didn't ask for another one.
What was that vehicle?
If it's not in the budget, it's not in the budget.
What was that vehicle that it showed up there?
Uh, that's for the, the CIPs.
Oh, okay.
You want me to pull that up again?
No.
We've already given three vehicles this year, so they can figure out how to do those vehicles. He didn't ask for it, then it's not in his budget for.
I think they would be requesting, Madam Chairman. They would be requesting an, an additional vehicle. Unfortunately, I felt that it was kinda late in the game because it really would need to go through. We, we have a process for larger expenditures. Uh, so there would be probably conversations between the commissioners and the sheriffs to see if they could, uh, make do with what they have.
Why don't we, uh, hold on their budget then before we make anything else? I wanna have a full conversation.
These are, yep, we're still in workshops, yep.
They need to come in and explain how they're gonna take care of the vehicle that's not been budgeted.
Those three vehicles, we're just getting in our rotation, just so they roll with this one singular one. I'm not sure what that was for.
I, I'm sorry, but I'm not cracking with you.
Well, was that for a single vehicle up there?
For the sheriff's office?
On the sheriff's office, snug on that truck?
Those were for the, the ones in CIP.
For all three?
Yes.
Yeah, so those are fixed. That's a fixed deal. So what are you talking about?
So they add a position, do they need another vehicle?
Oh, okay. Now I'm following you. Alright, yeah. I wouldn't take a new position vehicle also. Good point.
They need to clarify that. Or do they have enough in their current allocation to cover?
Yep, yep.
Commissioners, that is some initial conversations that I had with the captain. They, the concern would be is that a few of those vehicles are hitting over the hundred and twenty thousand mark. I mean, what they were trying to do is turn those vehicles. So they, they might have to hold on to a vehicle longer than the hundred and twenty thousand mile mark that has been established for, uh, their office.
I'm, I'm following you.
You would ask them to give us a breakdown on what their vehicles are, what the mileage is?
Okay.
Go look at that.
We can do that.
Cause that's something we're gonna have to look at.
You're now in position, you better make sure that you can let somebody in the vehicle.
Give him a horse.
Uh, Commissioners, this is for the, the commissioners. You can see that we have significantly increased the, uh, travel expense budget as the commissioners have been attending NACO, uh, the annual conferences and other, um, matters committees related to your function. Uh, so we did significantly increase, um, that expense line, um, as.
How far are we gonna be over for this year's?
Oh.
I won't go to NACO next year. You know, we need a strong commitment from you one way or another. If you're planning on going to NACO, I know Commissioner Caldwell will be going. I think the WIR conference needs to be attended. And then we've always sent somebody in the summertime because that is where all of the legislation occurs, all of the, um, terms skipping me right now, but where they actually look to do all of the endorsements and that type of thing. So I mean, it, it's pretty critical with somebody being in the summer one too. So that means that at least three conferences and then all of our standard conferences. And so, and, and really we missed not going to Coeur d'Alene this year. We did save the taxpayers' money, but we also missed out on a lot of the conversations that were there. So we. Uh, we did save the taxpayers money, but we also missed out on a lot of conversations that were there. So you, we've got two annual conferences with all of our travel expenses. I want to make sure that.
I, I've. Uh, right now, you're over. It's like, the grand total expense is about twenty-nine thousand, twenty-one thousand, excuse me. And we still have the annual.
So twenty-one right now without the annual, so we're gonna be at twenty-five.
Yeah.
I, I think that should be twenty-five and not twenty.
Okay. And just so it's clear, that's, that, that includes uh, meals, um, hotel, the conference itself that we've cut, yep.
I'm not gonna plan on NACO this year.
You're not going?
I'd like to do the, the WIR, our other IACs. I don't think I'm gonna go to NACO this next year. So I think, aren't you going, Catlin?
Okay, uh, the next one is your coroner. The only increase that the coroner has asked for, well, he has not asked for, this is the recommendation from uh, HR. Um, so that was the only increase that the coroner is, has in his budget.
He still have a, he still has a deputy. Why are we not giving the deputy an increase?
She is getting an increase to her hourly rate. We've all, we've done eight thousand and we've always been under budget, so even with the increase, it's still under budget.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, this is for the prosecuting attorney's budget.
And this goes back to a conversation around the elected officials, so. NACO is gonna be moving on, and what do we want to put out there as far as what people will be looking toward for um, salary? So that's a seven percent increase, and personally, I think that's too much. I think we should be reducing that down to where it's the standard three percent. Increase, but that's my feedback, that's not. If we're gonna put somebody else in that in a point, then we need to make sure that that salary is something that they understand, that this is the salary, not what's in this budget rate.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, that structure could change.
If you put that line item under three percent increase like the rest of the set, the team then.
We will work with uh, HR and make sure that we make the adjustments based on the conversation today. Um, Commissioners, you do uh, recall that there were also uh, requested increases to their dues memberships as well as a victim resource budget, so those are what you see here. Overall, they're uh, at, at this time is an increase of six percent, but there definitely will be an adjustment now after the conversation. Uh, the next is uh, juvenile detention costs, Commissioners, uh, we're, I know that. Thirty-five thousand seems a lot uh, to budget for, but you just never know. Um, and I do think. At so, it's possible, within the next few years, the commissioners could reduce that, but I do think that it's uh, it is budgeted appropriately. Because we just don't know if we're gonna have a juvenile that's uh, needing to be in a facility, juvenile detention facility for a long period of time. The in- costs are increasing. It's my understanding Ada County is increasing that to uh, I think it's two hundred and eighty-five dollars uh, a day. Don't quote me on that, we haven't seen. A proposal. I think uh, we are aware that there is gonna be a significant increase. We just don't know what that's going to be just yet.
And the process that is being utilized is not changing.
No.
So, because I know that for a while, we were trying to get them. Into a different facility or something, or am I thinking?
It depends on the case. It, it's a case by case.
And yeah, I think that we need, you know, we're increasing our number of juveniles up here too. I mean, it's not like we're. Reducing the number of kids that are here, or increasing them. I think we're doing a much better job of. Getting to them before these types of situations occur for them, but. We just never know.
Really good. Infrastructure out there now.
Commissioners, I might have misspoke. It's two hundred and thirty-six dollars a day now. I do think it's going up to two sixty-five. Uh, but I do think um. What the commissioners or what is being proposed for next fiscal year is budgeting appropriately. Just don't know.
We've used that for a couple of years.
You're currently using almost ten thousand this year.
This year?
Twenty-three was eighteen thousand. The ten thousand is only one juvenile.
Yes, uh, I think two, but yes.
They were nice.
Commissioners, the next budget uh, we're looking at is for facilities. Overall, there was an increase by seven point two four percent. Uh, one of those. We're trying to account for is the garbage removal for the Cascade Annex. Janitorial, uh, supplies, and then the landscaping maintenance. Um, but this is one, Commissioners, that is, if you can see, this year, we've only expended seventy-one thousand on uh, repairs, maintenance. And I don't know, um, still a little unclear if what expenses are to come out this year, if there are significant repairs, maintenance that are gonna be taken out of this year's budget. It would be helpful to know that information, uh, just to begin, just to make sure that we are budgeting accordingly for next fiscal year.
Terry has been engaged in the budgeting process too.
Yes.
The heat and air conditioning system's gotta be.
I, I do think it's difficult for her for this fiscal year to make recommendations though. Um, I, I think. Once she has, my understanding, again, not to speak for her, uh, but she is really planning on software to assist with um, assisting. The county and her department to determine uh, the type of maintenance that is needed uh, based on priority, and then that will also be incorporated to her budget preparations. So I don't know if it's fair for her to, I don't think she's had the opportunity this fiscal year really to determine that.
Have they talked at all about um, the senior, the community center over there? Scott talked last year about needing to replace the furnaces over there.
That would be incorporated into this budget too, but is it specifically budgeted for? No.
Is that something we're gonna look at, CGB grant?
I don't know what his plan is.
I would like to think it comes through CIP. It's over twenty-five thousand. At least my furnace was over twenty-five thousand.
Um.
My nasty area, she's, I got that.
I guess, yes, with that said, this, this might need to be adjusted for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Um, but we. As we all know, Commissioners, we have about two weeks left, so it would, we were, would respectfully ask that that information be provided to the clerk's office sooner than later. The only um. Comments I would have, the clerk's office would have, is just regarding the janitorial. Uh, we do have. One full-time position open and then one part-time position open.
Open as in vacant?
As in vacant, yes.
Uh, we have one full-time position vacant. We've never filled the part-time position.
Commissioners, we do have that budgeted for, for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Is that something that is still a necessity or, or, I'm, I would assume that it would be based on the facilities that we have.
Adding the annex, I would think so.
Yeah, so. I just don't know, um.
So, Mike, in that statement, we've never filled it. We've been trying to fill it for a while. Why can't we fill it?
We've never been able to find a part, uh, in, in individual interested in part-time custodial position. Yeah.
So is that something that we need to revisit and make it?
Well, I think full-time would be.
We have a lot of buildings now that these people are in control of, so.
And they need to be able to take a day off every now and again.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so if, my recommendation would definitely be rather than have two full-time and one part-time to have three full-time.
Why don't you have Scott look at that and get back to us ASAP if that is a need, or if that is maybe something we can wait a year on. Uh, let's find out. I mean, if we have a position out there, we're asking the taxpayers to fund it and we can't fill it, then that's a problem too, so.
And then Commissioners, again, I hate to, to say this, but then are we getting to the point of, do we contract it out again?
Yeah, exactly.
So it's just something that the Commissioners need to, to take into consideration as well. So sorry to kind of throw that out there.
The only thing on a contract is though, is that they weren't doing the work either, because they couldn't find the employees, and so therefore, you pay somebody contract and they're still not fulfilling it. I'd rather be collecting the tax and not having to pay it out than pay it out and not have the work, so.
This is for emergency service management, is civil defense is what we call this line, and basically, all that is being requested is a three percent increase to. Uh, the salary of the emergency services manager.
And that one is one that we don't know if we're gonna get reimbursement still. Has that been clarified?
Hasn't been clarified about what the reimbursement is going to be.
That would be one to keep your eyes on, guys.
So what was position?
Yes.
We've always been reimbursed fifty percent of that, so.
Uh, homeland security, basically. Uh, the next one is economic development. Commissioners, this year, we have, we budgeted seventy-five thousand. There was a commitment for um. Payment to the uh, the dog uh. The dog races. That was not, the race was not conducted, so the Commissioners uh, held that money back. Um, but what has been budgeted for, for next fiscal year to include the contribution for the Economic Development Director is seventy-five thousand with uh. Some funds also available for any other projects that the Commissioners uh, determine that are economic development worthy. That has.
Put that out with our grant program and let people know that, you know, with the economic development, because there are some things happening out there that might be worthy of this. Advertisement kind of businesses.
Expenses. Sure difference. Twenty-three, they're two hundred grand, seventy-five thousand, sixty-five thousand this year.
The grants.
This was uh, in fiscal year twenty-three, that was uh, I can go and look for us.
The three hundred and fifty-eight is what they're saying is that want to write grants for that amount and potentially get them in. And that should be left in there, because those are CDBG grants. That would be the line item to do that with.
And this, sorry to interrupt everyone, my apologies for just spouting out, this a hundred and forty thousand that was expended in fiscal year twenty twenty-three was for the Yellow Pine Water Treatment Facility Improvement. Uh, so that was that expense.
Written grants before for, that usually all goes through the EDC. But Panser now, I mean, there's CDBG grants that we could use.
We, we still, yeah, we do need to have a grant line in your economic development fund to fund those.
I mean, the air grounds would be economic development for this area, should we choose to write a grant for down there.
The other, um. So if I can remind the Commissioners, the, there was also that, um, I believe it was fifty thousand that was budgeted for, for the road study. Uh, that was going to be uh, written. And that will be coming out of this fund.
Okay. For the road study?
This, I think it was the safety travel grant.
Oh, okay. So not at road and bridge?
No, we felt that uh, that could be classified as an economic development grant. If the Commissioners are inclined to fund that out of. County agent, this is for University of Idaho Extension Office. Uh, Commissioners, you will see the um, the adjustment that was uh, made or taken, uh, that was added regarding the um. Coordinator positions, uh, and adjusting those positions, uh, there was a need to increase uh, that. So you will see that. Um, and there was. Request for additional funding for um, the agricultural program as where, as well as the community development program. So overall, their budget was increasing by three point six percent. The next one is where the county is seeing a significant reduction uh, in the budget, and that's for IT. If you recall, our IT director uh, kind of shared with the Commissioners that. Um, for next fiscal year, he doesn't have any uh, big projects, uh, so there was a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars in his budget. And there's a decrease overall of thirteen percent to the IT budget.
They don't have to pay computer arts anymore.
We do not.
So.
We have to, we have uh, the civil program and the indigent program through computer arts. We still have two pro- softwares with computer arts.
But the rollover to Tyler has occurred and we don't have to pay both for.
Correct, no, we're, but we do have to, we did have to bump up our software for Tyler to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that incorporates financials, that incorporates Hugh uh, and payroll.
So is this taking into account, like, building apartment and P and Z are doing on?
We're hoping that that's funded this year. Uh, Commissioner Thompson?
I, I asked them to have it, have it decided by August tenth.
Okay.
We will have that decided.
We, we are hoping that they've uh, finalized that project, fund that project this fiscal year. If not, we are gonna have to, I guess, roll over that money. Uh, roll over that budget for next fiscal year if the Commissioners are inclined to do that.
We're gonna make sure that they have it.
That would be.
Been two years.
That would be uh, yep. Um, but you can, uh, you can see that there was a significant uh, decrease in the IT budget.
Yeah, for IT to go down, that's.
Drop IT.
You know, yeah, right, uh, however, that also, um.
It was a one-time deal though.
I, 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 yes, I, I, let's, I mean, of course, as the clerk, we would like to see that um. Maintain the same budget level, but we all know that there are software that's gonna be uh, looked at probably every fiscal year. Commissioners, this is just the elections budgets. Uh, there were.
One more question on software. Will I have my brain wrapped around it? So last year, the sheriff's department wanted to upgrade something and we put them off a year. And that is not in this budget, so.
Putting it off another year. They, I believe, I, again, I shouldn't speak for the sheriff and I shouldn't speak for the IT director, but it's my understanding that conversations were had. With their civil department to continue with the civil software that they have now, and they have agreed to wait a year. I'm gonna skip the elections, because there's, there's no increase, but we do have uh. An election in the primary, uh, in uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, it'll be a primary, uh, so we will be budgeting for that out of the election fund, but we're not asking for any increase. Um, Commissioners, this is fire mitigation. You can see that there was a. I didn't. There was an uh added position, uh that was, as you can see, there's a significant increase. Um, to their budget, but the reason for that is the new position that has been added.
Was she gonna bring that position online next year?
Yes, I think the the goal for her was to bring it on in the next fiscal year, October one.
And I'm looking at this though, that tells me that we're funding both out of the county, so where does, where do we get?
Well, we get, we have a, we have a new, we have a revenue line for um for Mara's position in the general fund.
And then her position funded through that grant?
Yes.
That's what I was asking, and where is that?
That's what you, yes, I was looking at that. So we're hitting funded even though it's.
We're spending it here, but we're getting reimbursed.
Reimbursed.
Commissioners, if you see uh this grant, G N A in infrastructure. Uh, the two hundred and eighty thousand, uh what is included in that two hundred and eighty thousand is any uh fieldwork as well as her salary. That's what we're projecting. On the revenue side. But yes, uh commissioners, as um discussed. It would be ideal for the commissioners to determine if they are gonna fund. Mara's position with tax dollars or um. The revenue from the G N A and then the new position uh would be funded with the G N A funds.
That's what Mara's want.
So. The, so if we find Mara this year, we need to find thirty-five thousand more somewhere, that'll come out of.
It would, or remaining cash i- is really probably where it would be.
Okay, um, I think that's probably a good call and get hers into the budget. And then the other one.
For reven- or ask for reimbursement from the new position.
Correct, because then that also puts out additional funding on that G N A. It will either have it go longer or it actually will put more. Work on the ground because we will be requesting less salary reimbursement. I think that's the smarter way to go if that works, what do you guys say?
I agree, I would like to see Mara's position permanent, wildfire is probably the biggest.
Yes, agree.
I've been fussing at her.
For two years, we need to get you.
And I honestly, I think that the other position should be put underneath of it, but um. Maybe that's next year's step, so that both of them are funded eventually out of our budget.
She's got three more years, I believe.
Or requesting less on the salary side of things, that's. Make that even go longer or put more work on the ground. I have on my schedule to work on this grant program Thursday. We have a lot of questions to answer before we do anything on grants, oh.
Commissioners, this is the the general funds, uh general fund budget, uh which funds. Um, the contributions, uh basically the utilities for the county. We do have the opioid money in here, um outsourcing costs for when we do the large mailers. Uh, commissioners, if you can see, we reduced all of the nonprofits uh. That we had specific expense lines for and just created a nonprofit grant contribution line of two hundred thousand. I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners, uh that amount was in fact what was kind of discussed. Uh, we don't really have an official process for that. Um, that will the nonprofits. Be just kind of notified, um. But with the commissioners, we did do, what we did do uh based on the conversations is we. Reduced all of those to zero and we created a specific nonprofit grant contribution line and budgeted two hundred thousand.
Is that the one that have been in discussion with Tracy and so?
This is all of the nonprofits, Treasury, Trans, or one rather, you know, all of the ones there that we.
Youth Advisory, uh are the Youth Advocacy Coalition.
Just put them all under one.
And we're gonna have them do it as a grant request with their business plan and have some kind of accountability to all of that, so just.
Yeah, I like that. You know, it's too. Too loose.
Commissioners, we are running out of time, um and I know this probably wasn't enough time to kind of give you a full overview. We're probably gonna have to schedule. Probably two or three hours to go over anything else additional that the commissioners have questions on. And what I wanted to kind of focus on today were some of the the large things within the general fund. Um, but others, uh budgets that I wanted to just kind of share with you is tort. Uh, this is our premium to I C R I P, uh that is going up eleven percent. Uh, to three hundred and sixty-two thousand, that is with our discount, without the discount, it's approximately three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, but our premium for I C R I P is going up by almost twelve percent for next fiscal year.
One sixty-nine and twenty-three to three sixty-two.
Yeah.
That's a significant.
Three years, it's.
And if you remember the presentation that you guys have seen, the reasons are. A lot of different things. The other one I.
We need three hours in the future.
Two, okay, I I again, I just, uh, you 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 told me what you think we need, the health district contribution. Um, this is a requirement since we don't have uh indigent, we don't levy for indigent. Um, but they're asking for a slight increase from two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars to two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, what else did I want to, the the one that uh is fairgrounds, commissioners. We did receive their budget requests or a budget presentation from them, um. We are going to be paying out of their budget for this fiscal year, some of the upgrades that are needed. I guess there was just some um questions on what to levy for for next fiscal year. Should we levy what we have on the proposal right now is uh sixty thousand, I do see that there's probably gonna be cash forward of ten thousand. Um, with the potential to be more carryover to uh to reduce the amount that we need to levy for in property taxes. That was a question that that we had.
Yeah, in our last. Fair boards meeting last week. Had a long talk with them about the dollar and I said, spend it. You have all this carryover, a hundred grand, I said, spend it on all these. Capital improvement things you want, you know, your bleachers, tractor, whatever, spend it. And I said, in the future. We hope that this whole process, you know, with the vent center and everything, becomes a self-sustaining. Entity where we could drop this levy down.
So.
That's, that's the goal, you know, right now, I don't know if we can do that, but. That's the goal for, you know, future of this whole area.
So make sure that when they spend it, they spend it on things that they will take with them should they ever. Um, leave the fairground area, I I guess what I'm saying is like bleachers, bleachers should be bought by the county out of these funds. They become ours, you don't want them spending any money on anything that they would up and take with them. I mean, if they want a tractor, they could go sell it.
It's like they they have a tractor, they wanna sell the tractor and get a bigger one and trade it in however.
That's great.
It's it's kind of a gray area as to how. We look at that, I mean, they're a separate entity, but they need to buy all this parts and pieces for the fair. You know, rodeo.
Only to run the fair and rodeo.
To run the fair and rodeo, so. Bottom line, does the county own all this? Pieces of equipment or do the fair rodeo do it? Because I understand that that the county would own, actually own. Property. Bleachers, the tractor, that stuff, but they would be using it. If they have all this carryover money, they need to be spending it and not carrying it over every year.
No, they, so we need an off, we need another conversation offsite. They need their carryover money to put on the fair and rodeo for the next year.
And I told them that you need to have, you need to keep X amount in there. To bring, to run the rodeo the next year and then, yeah, the county levies X amount.
But the county is going to start levying money to improve the facility. So the county will levy money to improve the pig barns, the stock barns, all of that kind of stuff. And we won't provide it to the fair board because they have enough to run the fair and rodeo.
Yeah, they're they're in good shape financially right now.
Okay, like the tractor was purchased by the county, so they can't just sell the tractor and buy a new one and then it's not county property. My understanding was is that that was a joint, but they want to pay us back for the initial investment, Clerk Miller, do you know? That was.
I don't recall, we can research it.
We need to do that research on that to figure out who bought it, my understanding was that was a joint purchase. Um, and if it was, they need to pay us back, they go buy their own tractor, the county's not gonna buy a tractor. The county needs a tractor for down there for the, really.
Yeah.
For the other side that the fair board is not involved in, we need equipment.
Yep.
So, so we can't just get rid of a tractor and not have one for the for each side of things.
They need that tractor to be able to grade, they get a new drag and it, a little tractor will hardly pull the drag, so they need a larger tractor.
Maybe that's. Now, again, a joint investment, but that's where these funds need to. To be utilized, so how much do we want to identify per year? In order to improve that fairgrounds, it was fifty thousand when I came on, I had the clerk increase it to seventy. So that we could catch up with some of the problems that are down there, but now that we're doing the survey to find out what we want to do with that whole thing moving forward. I don't know how much we actually want to improve those buildings until we have a long-term plan for that whole area.
I think we want to improve them.
Okay.
So we probably need to read that email like it is. So we we skip the.
I think the sixty thousand makes sense, just in case we had something.
Yeah.
Between now and when, that's a longer term planning, you know, next year, we really need to think a lot, long-term, how much we want to. Um, do, I mean, you can go up to, I think their levy amounts up to like a hundred and. Six thousand or something like that, I mean, it's pretty high.
We have to take into consideration, it has to be fall within the three percent new construction too with the entire county levy, right?
Right.
But that's where you're gonna end up starting to build new buildings down there or that type of thing. We have to have grant match, that's gonna be where your levy amount's gonna come from, those types of investments. So we need to be careful with the fair board with what they're spending those funds on, I mean, it needs to be something that's.
And it's, it's a stinking gray area that they don't understand. How do I do with all this extra money that they keep carrying over, because they don't need a hundred and something thousand dollars to put on the next fair with. And that's why, why don't we use these other funds, I said, well, if you want to buy a tractor, you need to buy a tractor. Does that need to be us buying the tractor or them buying the tractor? But whatever it gets bought, it needs to be used by them for the fair. And not down at the road department.
Let's have that conversation during their budget, they need to get their budget in and we need to have a full conversation after the fair this year.
Uh, commissioners, we're we're gonna have them come in January, is what I've talked with their board about doing.
All right, we have to move on.
Real quick, lastly, just revow, I just want to show you that the position that was requested has also been budgeted for in revaluation. Um, so that, if you recall, Assessor Leaper requested a new appraiser that has been budgeted for. In the revaluation budget.
It's still only an increase of two point one?
Yep, the overall is two point one percent for their overall budget. Hey, commissioners, thank you.
Is the individual been notified that? He's on next, or is that what we're doing for?
He was sitting outside.
Our executive, oh, okay, perfect, I can't see him. All right, um, next we are going into executive session for Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B for an evaluation, do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in seconded, roll call vote.
Mop and I.
Mop and I.
I will lie.